Yeah. She's supposed to have tryouts tonight. Jeremy's like, he didn't call it and he pulled up, he's like, we're not going. And then Ash is supposed to have, she's on Fox, so it's supposed to be select tryouts tonight, which is gonna...
We all ready to go?
All right, gentlemen.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
Before we get, before we get started, I would like to invite Rob Keck to come forward, and as has been our practice, we're gonna open the meeting in prayer.
And let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we just come before you this evening, and we just want to thank you, Lord, for all the blessings that you bestowed upon our lives and upon this nation.
Thank you.
And as a nation that seems to have made a choice, Lord, to follow worldly wisdom, we just ask, dear God, this evening, that you fill us with, with wisdom, Lord, godly wisdom. And I pray, dear God, for the, the people here that are representing, or that represent us, that they would make good decisions and wise decisions, Lord, and the right decisions, give them strength and courage and be with them. And, Lord, we pray that once again you would return to the classroom and, and to the courtroom in this nation, dear God, that we would seek your face and your guidance. And, Lord, we pray that all that we do and say would bring glory and honor to you. And we pray and we ask all of this in your mighty and precious name, Lord Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The chair notes that a quorum is present, and this regular business meeting of the Marshall County Council for June 13th, 2024, will come to order. Before we get started on the rest of the agenda, we always like to offer members of the public an opportunity to comment on any items that are on the agenda, so if any member of the public would like to address the council on agenda items, you're welcome at this time. And hearing none, we're gonna deviate from the agenda a little bit. Commissioner Klotz and Mr. Culp have got a request they'd like to share with us, and I think Duane's gotta get on the road here pretty soon, so come on up. If you gentlemen could please state your names and positions for the record, and you'll wanna speak directly into that microphone there so that the folks at home in the back of the room can hear you.
Stan Klotz, Marshall County Commissioner, District One.
Duane Culp. I am with the Security Division to the Marshall County Sheriff's Department at the courthouse.
I'm Dan Samartano with Hyperwave Consulting.
Thank you all for agreeing to allow us to present this proposal tonight. As you're aware, I think most of you had copies of this. We've had issues at the courthouse in this building with cameras. We technically got about seven of them out right now, with a couple more, it's not the best of shape. So I was hoping to wait till this fall to do this, but I see no reason to put money into a system that's, you know, needs to be replaced. So we have a proposal here from Hyperwave, and it's gonna change just a little bit because Denny here in the building has come up with three new cameras to get better coverage. He'd like to add to his proposal. And also, there's talk right now it'll be up to sheriff to make the final decision, excuse me, final decision, but there's talk about changing the configuration of entering the courthouse over here so we can better protect security, should there be a person come in with bad intentions. So, well, this is the proposal we have right now tonight. I just want to let you know, it could go a couple thousand dollars higher if we do all this. So I brought Duane and Dan along, so if you have any questions about what it's gonna be, they can answer them for you, so. Duane, got anything you wanna say?
Well, first off, thank you for entertaining the thought of replacing this because it's something that's very needed. One thing to me that would be a selling point would be, the cameras that we're installing are gonna be done by Hyperwave, and there will not be any service calls or nothing like that, because it'll fall since they are contracted with us now. One of the things that we will pay for the products, but there won't be a service call because lately we've been getting service calls on replacing a camera. They come in and they service it once, oh, yep, you need a new camera. They come back, we get, you get two bills for that, and it's over a thousand dollars every time. Plus, the other, the other selling point to this is, you just, I, I just, I just think that, the other selling point for me is that every time somebody comes into that courthouse, I got my back to them. And if you've ever been a cop, that's a no-no.
Yeah.
I, I wanna see where I'm at, I wanna see what I'm doing, and I wanna see what's coming at me. And if anybody knows anything about law enforcement, again, the first person that's gonna get shot is me and my partner, and that's the last thing I want. But if I see it coming, I got a better chance at least ducking or something. With that, it's gonna take that, we're gonna have to spin that counter, or a counter, back. The other thing we're gonna have to do is all the wires that are coming to the wall are gonna have to be dropped through the ceiling. So doing that, we can wrap it up and make it look a lot better, and we would just have to figure out how, when they're coming in to the left, to get them in, because I don't like when people come down the stairs or the elevator, because the first thing they're doing is they're seeing my back.
Right.
I can't see them, and it just bothers them. So, a great idea, and, and I owe Denny Dribbleless an apology, because I just had my mind thinking and going, and I forgot those three cameras, and them three cameras are gonna be less than a thousand dollars. So, with our present bids, so, and, and I've been in close contact with Dan from Hyperwave, and we're gonna work together, and one of the biggest selling points, again, is you will not have a camera license fee for every camera, which is 150 bucks. There's presently 68 cameras.
Wow.
Wow.
So, do the math on that at about 150 dollars for every camera when it goes out, and there's several of them that are the old analog. Everything that you get here is gonna be hi-def, and it's also gonna be cameras that, if I wanna zoom in, I can see. So if you wanna see the cameras, the Blueberry Festival has those cameras out in the park. They've been up all winter. You can put it on your phone. So if that's something you guys want, that's your business. Have at it.
Anything you wanna add, Dan?
The one thing that we're gonna do as well is have all these cameras. Right now, we don't have the ability, but they will be tied into the dispatch center as well, so in the event of an incident, they can see what's going on, and officers can respond faster. Right now, we don't have that ability with the system that's currently in place. So it'd be one more thing to help out with security if something does happen.
I would just also add, the reason we're here is because basically sheriff doesn't have the money in his budget to do it. Sheriff will still retain control of security. We're just helping provide the funding to get this, get this done. I think it's overdue. We put the penny button system in, what, two years ago?
Yeah.
And I think people are a lot more, feel more secure in the building, and I think this will also, in case of something happening, we're gonna be better prepared and see it coming instead of try to protect our employees and try to protect the public coming in out of these buildings, so. And also, like in this building, there's times if somebody goes to lunch over there and Daniel go over to help, he'll be able to carry a pad and monitor this building even when he's at the courthouse, and know everything's going on, just like he was walking the building, so. There's just a lot of advantages to this system.
Yeah. Very good.
Question? I see it's got a three-year warranty. Is there any possibility with extending that warranty at any point, or is that just kinda...
That's manufacturer standard. They only allow you to do a three-year warranty on it, so anything above and beyond that, we'd have to buy new equipment if it failed after that point.
And what's the possibility of any updates in the future? Because technology changes so fast, that with the equipment that you're putting in, can you expand upon that at some point if they need to?
Yes, so the, the cameras themselves are only one piece of it. It's the, the recorders that we're putting in place that have those capabilities to add new features. There's like elk license plate readers and pantill zoom cameras, and all of course sorts of other things we can add, and there's some AI stuff if we need to. That will all be built into the system that will, will grow in scale as we need to. The cameras themselves are pretty much a basic camera just to record. So if there is anything additional that comes out, new technologies, it will interface with the system, so.
They, they will also be able to program in like they do the computer system. They'll be able to punch in through it and fix it remotely, too.
Perfect.
Mr. Harmon?
You said you need three more cameras still for this...
Yeah.
System, so it's gonna add on to any, but a grand?
Roughly, if we have to pull, if we have to pull a cable, it's 175 dollars for the cable, and then 100, the cameras are roughly 200 dollars apiece, so three of them would be a thousand dollars roughly, give or take.
Okay, so 55,000-ish?
Yeah. Well, and there, there could be a little cable, additional expense with cables, if we switch that desk around over to courthouse, I don't know what that's gonna look like yet, so that's why I say it could be a couple thousand dollars more.
This sounds like it is a criminal justice-related facility expense.
Sure is. And you wanted to advertise it for next meeting? Perhaps you guys have it, this approved from the commissioners already?
Commissioners already taken this up and, and have approval to send it to you guys for potential funding.
Okay, for next month, right? I mean, I assume...
Whatever you, whatever you guys choose.
Okay.
Additional? Go ahead, Jim.
Sorry. Does this also do the recording and everything? So if you needed to go back and check it?
Yeah, yes.
And the accessibilities to what key people, then?
It'd be whoever, whoever in charge of the system, the sheriff, or, or Duane, or whoever decides gets access to it. Each user has their own login, so that way they can give them access to only cameras they, they need to see. So that way, you know, just for example, the auditor's office needs to see their cameras, they can just log in to see those cameras. So it, it depends on how, it's, we can completely control it however you guys want, whoever you want to have access to it.
So if they needed to expand it in the future, if they decided they needed three more, then, we're gonna be pretty close to the price range that you're quoting for those three now, correct?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, because after you get something set up, you've always forgotten somewhere, especially in a facility this size.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Any additional questions from the council? Is there a motion?
Motion to give financial support in the future for this project in the approximate amount of 56,000 dollars.
Second?
All right, you wanna advertise that from the special lit?
Special lit got a nice supplemental distribution, and so did the general fund, so either one's fine with me.
I would just have one question. Will the supplemental lit cover this building, Marcel?
This is...
Will this be considered part of the criminal justice? Okay.
Community corrections is over here.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, not community probation.
I'm sorry.
Probation over here, yeah. Yeah, prosecutor's office, okay. Just wanna make sure.
And the prosecutor.
Yep, yep.
We're talking lit money, then?
That's, that would be my suggestion.
Yeah.
All right, so I've got a motion by Mr. Harmon, a second by Mrs. Johnson, to support this and to advertise for the July meeting for, for the amount requested to come from the special lit. Is there any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, and the motion is agreed to.
I would just ask you, can we get the ball rolling up to the point of ordering the cameras? What do we need to do? Are you okay with that?
I think that's what we just approved.
I just wanna make sure. Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I got other things on the agenda. You want me to come back later? You want me to take care of them now?
Yeah, why don't you, well, we'll just take care of you now, and we'll get you out of here if you need to.
Okay, thank you. See ya.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
It was brought to my attention today, thankfully, by auditor, that we are required to make a, the commissioners make a recommendation on pay raises for next year, and since I believe this is your last meeting before the budget process starts, contacted my two fellow commissioners, and we kinda come up with a, a broad range of ideas, but we come up generally a 4% increase is our recommendation. We realize it's non-binding. Also, I know there was talk last year of maybe even doing a flat rate, so I'm not sure what you're gonna do, but we were told basically, whatever we did, make the rate a little higher to give you guys flexibility, so that's what we've done. Gives you the, gives you the opportunity to do wherever you see fit, whichever way you wanna go, but just for the record, so it's on the minutes, 4% will be our recommendation for this time. And one other thing, over here, we've been discussing the Bowen Building. We're at the point now, I know Sandy's in the, in the audience here tonight, she has given me a letter from the Health Board. Every member of the Health Board signed their, they want us to move forward, looking at, see if we can make it work, so I think we're at the point now, there's one or two little issues around the building we've had checked out and just waiting for some confirmation to make sure the slope on the access ramp disabilities is, is correct. But other than that, I think we're at the point now that we need to have the council have some guidance, if they wanna move forward and fund it, how it would work, what it would look like. There's some things I'd like to say, but I don't wanna say them in a public meeting, that I'd like to make you guys aware of, hopefully some opportunities, but I think we need a plan if we're gonna move forward. I guess that'd be my suggestion to the council.
Just, just for the folks that don't have all the background on this information, the opportunities become available for the county to purchase the building over by Plymouth High School that the Bowen Center is currently occupying. They're, they're moving out...
One of the buildings?
Yeah, one of the buildings. And that it would give us an opportunity to put money up front and then save money in, down the road, because we wouldn't be paying rent anymore, right?
Well, rent's going up drastically.
Yeah.
So we found out last week, so it's even more of a savings than we originally thought.
Yeah.
So I'm just asking the council to kind of think about it and give us some guidance, because I don't wanna move forward and put a bunch of time and effort into it if there's no interest. I think there is, from what I've been, talked to different people on the council, but I'd also like to know, we had a plan in place, how we're gonna pay for it, before we go, make that, make an official offer, so.
Any questions from the council on that?
What?
How much is the building?
Well, I'll tell you later.
Stan?
We can use, we can use some of the Health First Indiana money.
Yeah. Can you just say it louder, please?
We can use some of the Health First Indiana money.
Yeah.
You can use 10% of that, of that money to, for the Health Department, for, for physical.
I've taken a look at it, it's a reasonable price.
We, we, yes, it's a cheap price. We've looked at it, talked to Sandy about it, and we've talked about doing what you're talking about, and she has some money available, and not enough, but it'd be, you know...
It'd be a big step in the right direction.
A big step in the right direction. For what, for what we can buy that, we think we can buy that building for, I've talked to Mr. Baumgartner, the CEO of Bowen Center a couple times, he has agreed to take the, a, a certain amount to his board for the favorable recommendation. No guarantee his board will accept that offer, but we're close with what they originally wanted. So we tried to figure out what we could afford to do and what made sense for the county, and this does make sense if it works.
How much would you be looking for from the county for this?
Well, there, there is, because of the age of the building, the HVA sys, HVAC systems are probably within a couple years, the end of their life. We've had the boilers checked out, there's some boilers in it, and they've told us they're all in good shape, they have several years left in them, but they, they, they suggested we do about 500 dollars with the upgrades on some check valves and stuff, and then the roof's in great shape, it's a metal roof, it's a heavy roof, but it's 24, 25 years old, the building, so we need to check the caulking and some things like that on it, you know, because of the age. And then there was a question on the grade on the, the ramp, coming in and out of the building, that we're having checked to make sure it meets grade, but I had a guy look at it, and he, it'd be very, very, very reasonable to replace if we have to, what he's suggested we do. So I'm thinking all in all, we need to figure probably 200,000, 200,000 dollars plus whatever she's, plus what she's got. So that's about the extra we need to come up with.
And your, your estimate, Stan, is we, we should be able to recoup our investment in what, about seven, eight years, something like that?
Well, even less than that now.
Yeah.
You're talking...
Three years, maybe?
Yeah, less, about, about three, three to four years.
Yeah.
What, what, what the rate, what the rates they've given us here a few weeks ago, and so be, to be fair, the rates they give us was more space than what she's got now, okay? So we wanna compare apples to apples, but based on now, what we've paid for rent to get her more space, and the difference in price in this, it'd take less than four years to get her money, get her initial investment back.
Yeah.
So I think any, any land developer will tell you, it's a sweetheart deal.
Stan?
Yes.
And the zoning's appropriate?
My understanding, yes. I've talked to Denny Manuel, he didn't have any issues with it. I talked to him about the ramps and stuff, things, and a couple different things, about the building, make sure it's up to code to satisfy them, and it's basically, it meets everything that, when that building was built.
So for clarification, where Sandy is now, the rent includes all of the utilities?
Yes, it's like utilities on top.
Yeah, so you're gonna have to factor in what your utility costs are on top of...
He give us...
It'll take a little longer than those number of years to recoup, but it's...
No, no, not really. I, I figured the utilities, some of that in there.
Did you?
Yeah, I, I figured a little extra.
What's the rent now, in the 2,000 range a month?
I think it's close to 40 grand a year, isn't it, Sandy?
Really?
Yeah. It's about, it's about 40 over there, and it's about 35 for too many corrections.
Never used to be that high.
Yeah.
Imagine that.
You used to sell houses, what you're selling for today, too, Jim.
We should've bought that building.
Well, we're gonna get this one for half that price.
I know. I know.
So I would just ask, council be considering that and think about what they wanna do before we move forward.
Would you like a, a motion of support to move forward to look at an official proposal?
Personally, I would like to see a plan in place, that we know what we're gonna do. You know, a motion's great, but we need to know...
Obviously, we can't, we can't approve anything else, but I guess what we would, what we would be saying is that we're okay with it as a concept, and we'd like to see a proposal, right?
We could always take a proposal, I mean...
So your motion would be to move forward with the proposal?
Right, for, for us to receive an official proposal?
I can do that, and just tell Jay it's pending, final, you know, I have no problem with that, that's what you wanna do.
All right, let me alter your motion.
I didn't make a motion, I'm, I'm asking for one.
I, I would like authority to be involved with the financial, just assessment of this. I don't wanna be in the dark when it comes our way, if that's okay. I, I think one of us needs to be enlightened before it comes here.
Yes.
Well, for sake of transparency, the first meeting with Mr. Baumgartner, Tim was there.
Right.
It was Tim and I and Sandy.
Right.
Would, would you wanted to bring the proposal to the Budget and Finance Committee before it comes to the full council?
I like that idea.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Is there a proposal or a motion?
You gotta make one.
I'll make a motion that the Budget and Finance Committee receives a proposal financially from the commissioners, and I guess I don't have to be involved at that point, just so long as the Budget and Finance Committee's involved, so.
I don't have a problem, I'd rather you be involved, to be honest with you.
Okay.
I don't have a problem, I'd rather you be involved so you can report back to them.
All right, so let's, let's, let's alter, the alter motion. Motion is that I will be involved in the financial planning of the potential purchase of the Bowen Building, along with Stan and whoever else the commissioners decide, as a, as a subcommittee, or as a...
Right now, it's just you and me.
Okay.
But I need to take this back to commissioners also.
I'm all right with that.
So the motion is to have myself be given approval to work on this, how about that?
I'll second that.
All right.
I've got a motion by Mr. Harmon, and a second by Mrs. Johnson, to appoint Mr. Harmon to collaborate with Mr. Klotz regarding a potential purchase of the Bowen Center facility. Is there just...
Can we add that it'll come back to the personnel, or to the wage, to the wage, or the, the budget and finance? Can it come back to the budget and finance then?
Sure, sure, sure.
Okay.
And then obviously it would have to come before the whole council, if there's additional, so...
Right.
No one's gonna be left out of the dark, so...
Okay. All right, any additional discussion? All right, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, and the motion's agreed to.
Thank you very much, guys. Appreciate it.
All right. Up next, we've got Sandy Garrison and Mike Miley from the Marshall County Museum with their quarterly update, and sorry for delaying you guys so long tonight. Welcome.
Absolutely no problem.
Not a problem.
It's nice to see all you guys.
Hello. How you guys?
Thank you, Mike.
I want you to know that I came up with a different story for you guys. I always try to do that, because I, I know now that you listen to the history stories, so...
Thank you.
It's similar but different.
You put so much work into it, thank you.
Ah, it's actually, it's a lot of fun, I feel like I learn a lot.
Good much.
We had a visit from the president of the Lincoln Highway Association, they're actually coming to see us, so that's part of what I'm gonna tell you about, so I actually asked him what he would recommend, like what his favorite local story was about the Lincoln Highway, and so this was his suggestion. Jeff?
So I'm Sandy Garrison, Director of the Marshall County Museum.
I'm Mike Miley, President of Marshall County Historical Society.
And as always, in your packets, there's the museum's newsletter, plus documents from the Marsh, Marshall Historical, Marshall, oh gosh, you guys, March Historical Society Board Meeting, I want you to know I actually practiced this, too, so you wouldn't, couldn't tell, right? And flyers from some recent programs. So the museum, museum's summer is already off to a busy start. Last week, we hosted Indiana Humanities and the Indiana Historical Society for a planning session on America's 250th, and our brown bags have really been packing the house so far this year. Starting this month, and I have a flyer to show you, this was also something that I showed the commissioners, so you guys, I think maybe have seen this, but we're doing something a little bit different. We really take our, seriously the call to be the county's museum, and so for the first time, we're taking some of our brown bags on the road. The Bremen one will be presented tomorrow here in Plymouth, but we will also be doing two encore presentations, one will take place in Bremen and one in Culver. So sometime if your Friday schedule allows, we'd love you to join us for one of these sessions at any of the three locations. And as I mentioned, at the end of June, we'll be hosting members of the Lincoln Highway Association. They'll be in Elkhart for their national convention, and 90 of them will visit the museum, I actually found it today, it's gonna be 100, on June 25th and 27th. And we're always really excited to welcome this many out-of-town guests, and we recognize it's part of the museum's function to draw tourism dollars to the county. So the story I'd like to share with you today is in honor of their visit. As you know, Marshall County can claim the title of the original crossroads of America. We're the only place in the country where five of the first historic highways cross, so the story of those roads is really central to our story. But becoming that crossroad doesn't happen until a little bit later in our history. And so I have another photo to share with you. This is actually local, and I shared with the commissioners, 100 years ago, transportation really already was an important part of the American story. It was necessary for both settlement and economic growth. There were approximately 2.5 million road, miles of road in the United States then, but most were simply dirt, bumpy and dusty in dry weather and practically impassable and wet. And they didn't necessarily really go anywhere. They went to and from town, they were for local use, but they didn't go from one community to the next. That was really the railroad's job, so, you know, the road system was, was quite different 100 years ago. So enter this gentleman, another picture for you. This is Carl Fisher, he's a Hoosier of Indianapolis Motor Speedway fame, and he saw around 1912 that the road situation was really keeping the automobile and consequently, consequently end users from reaching their full potential. His vision to remedy this was to construct a coast-to-coast rock highway, and please note the key word here is rock. Improvement at that time was gravel road, so if you can imagine driving cross-country on a gravel road, but that was, you know, light years ahead of what it would've been But that was, you know, light years ahead of what it would have been like to drive on a dirt road. So, this road was intended as a living memorial to Abraham, President Abraham Lincoln. And when the proposed route was announced in 1913, it stretched more than 3,000 miles and stitched together thousands of existing roadbeds. But by 1914, Fisher's project had already stalled. There were no funds for this type of project, money had to be raised privately through donations. Plus, a route just could not be agreed upon. So, at this point, the Lincoln Highway Association changed its mission. It would now educate the public about the need for paved roads, using the Lincoln as a national model. And under this plan, the LHA would fund seedling miles built of brick or concrete, and they thought as people saw the benefits of these really great roads, they would press local officials to build such things in their communities. So, I have a picture of some local road building for you, whoops. There we go. However, for the next decade, largely due again to arguments over routes, the United States went from this one named highway, the Lincoln, to a confusing collection of numerous named highways. And because of the economic benefits, really nobody wanted to be left out, and so it was really hard to agree on just one route. So, then I want to tell you about what happened locally, that was also the case here. As it happened in 1927, the second alignment of the Lincoln Highway was fully decided, except as it would happen for the path right here through Marshall County. Ultimately, the state finally told local officials if they could not come into an agreement, the route would be decided for them.
Can I jump in once?
Okay.
Maybe you might not know, the original alignment of the Lincoln Highway, just west of Fort Wayne, went up through Goshen and Elkhart, South Bend, down through Valparaiso, and then came down to where we currently know it is going on, on west from there. So, what Sandy's talking about is they wanted to shorten the route.
Sorry. But you have to go back to feeling the mounting tension. Locally, they go like that, they got to decide now, you know, it's months of arguing, all sorts of stuff, so go back, so go back there. So, they get this announcement from the state that they have to make a decision or the state's going to come in and just decide for them. And so, several meetings followed, but still no compromise, and now it's the night before the meeting. Each side, in a packed session at the local high school here in Plymouth, that would have been Lincoln at the time, presented its case once again. The downtown businesses lobbied for a route along Gero Street, while others preferred a route using Jefferson. Well, you guys know what happened, ultimately, the groups supporting Jefferson won out. That night, because the cost to build even a new bridge was less expensive than rerouting the downtown route. Because it would require moving around the high school and all sorts of other changes. So, I've got one more picture for you. The new Jefferson Street, Lincoln Highway Bridge was constructed between 1927 and 1928 for the sole purpose of the Lincoln Highway. This photo, I don't know if you recognize, this is the southeast corner of Michigan and Jefferson, just a couple of blocks from here, and this is in 1929. If you look on the, so this was just on the other side of the new bridge. Gas at this point in time, you can't really see, but in the picture, it's 13 cents a gallon. And if you look closely, on the right-hand side, there's a pole, little white marker, that's actually the Lincoln Highway sign. That brings me to the end of today's report. Again, the national convention attendees will be visiting us on the 25th and 27th, if you guys are free, we would love to have you come and join us for lunch. And I'm happy to answer any questions, and I thank you as always for your attention.
Yeah, that's interesting, I used to live on the old Lincoln Highway in South Bend.
Yeah.
Which is Lincoln Way West now.
Yep.
Yeah, so it's interesting to know how that moved.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys.
All right, up next, we've got Sandy Dunphy from the Marshall County Health Department with a grant request. Evening Sandy.
Good evening. Sandy Dunphy, Administrator at the Marshall County Health Department. I'm here to ask for permission to apply for the Preparedness Grant. It's a five-year period, and it's $25,000 a year, and that's to help, right now, I put it as earmarked for salary, but that actually may not stay there, I don't know, I just wanted to put it in there. There may be other things that we do with it in Preparedness, I just haven't decided yet, but I knew it could sit there for now.
All right, any questions from the council? All right, is there a motion?
I move that we accept Sandy's and the Health Department's requests to apply for the grant.
Second the motion.
All right, I've got a motion by Mrs. Cox, a second by Mr. Patterson, is there any debate? And hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, and the motion's agreed to, thank you.
Thank you.
And up next, we've got Ty Adley from the Marshall County Planning Commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals with a additional appropriation request.
Good evening.
Evening Ty.
How are you all doing tonight?
Good.
Hopefully, dry before you got in.
Barely. So, you've got a additional appropriation request for, specifically for the BZA or for?
For the BZA and the Planning Commission, yes.
Okay. And what are your needs on that additional?
What are the needs on the additional? So, BZA is requesting $1,350 for printing and advertising, Planning Commission's requesting $1,500 for printing and advertising, and we're requesting $6,000 in legal services.
And obviously, you guys have had a lot of additional activity down there for the past six months that is beyond what you guys normally see, and so.
For the last year, yes.
And so, those items that we budgeted for this year are pretty much exhausted at this point, right?
Yes. We went through and robbed Peter, paid Paul to make our last series of claims work out. If we aren't successful tonight, I kind of question how much we're going to be able to accomplish for the next six months.
I don't want to speak on behalf of myself, or excuse me, I don't want to speak on behalf of the whole council, but I do, will speak on my own behalf. I do have some concerns with what's been going on in planning and with the way that solar, industrial solar has marched forward despite the massive amount of public feedback against that. Obviously, you're just doing your job, and so I hate that you're put into this position. But I do get the sense that the will of the council is to exercise our statutory authority to do what we can to let the people's will be done in the planning process.
Is it accurate, Ty, that in order to issue a solar, an industrial solar permit, that that has to go through the Board of Zoning Appeals?
Yes. If it's a special use within the ag district, it has to go through the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Okay.
There's zero way around that.
Okay. Are there any additional questions or comments from the rest of the council at this point?
Well, my question would be, Ty, we don't want to stymie what's going on with the Plan Commission and the BZA. If this is money that's going to go for other projects other than what the solar is, you know.
Correct.
So, if the money has been expended and it's been put out there, and we have the obligations to take care of that, I believe we should take care of that. We don't want to stop any growth in the county.
Yeah.
Because of whatever is on our personal agenda, whether you like it or not, you know.
Right, yep.
But speaking for myself, I think that if there's money that's been expended for advertising, whether it's for rezoning of properties or advertising you have to put out there for variances or special uses, then I would hate to see that stopped as a result of something we do here.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I don't want to, in my position would be, we have a BZA, and we have a Plan Commission, and they have a certain authority that they have that they work under certain parameters, okay? The last thing I would want to do though is if we're in charge of the monies, and this money has been expended, and it's for something else as far as going forward with development further into Marshall County, I wouldn't want us to deny it for that reason.
And I think you're right, Jim, I think that's why I asked Mr. Dalton to be here tonight, I've had some preliminary conversations with him. I think that the, my goal, and I don't know if anyone else here shares that or not, would be to exercise our powers in as delicate and in a finesse sort of a way as possible to use a scalpel rather than to use a sledgehammer. And so, I'd like to ask Mr. Dalton and Mr. Laban, with the council's statutory powers, what options would you recommend so that we can allow the Planning Commission and the BZA to proceed with normal business while simultaneously denying the ability of solar to move forward?
Before you answer that, is this money that's already been expended, or is this what you need for the future?
So, to clarify a little bit, within the last year, we've essentially revamped and robustly increased the amount of advertising we're putting out for that, so it's doubled and or tripled the amount in cost when we advertise for our different projects. Whether it be a minor subdivision, a rezoning, an adjustment of property lines for an elderly couple that we have going through. The individuals that are putting in applications for the BZA and the Planning Commission have already put their expense into us and have given us money to the general fund, and we are in a position to the point where we won't be able to put them on a docket and advertise for them, is the situation we're getting ready to go into. Because we've already expended those aspects. Because the budget that was put together for 2024 was put in, in June, July of '23, prior to that occurring. And that's all running on essentially the average of years past. And so, the majority of the budgets have all been relatively slimmed down to as little as we possibly can. And so, we try to keep that going in from year to year, and when you have a single line item expense double to triple in size, you don't necessarily have the funding to get through, and so I'm hoping that the additionals that we have are going to get us through the next two quarters. And we don't necessarily have to go through this again during the fourth quarter, just to receive a hearing in November, December. Because we still have BZA cases like home businesses. We have BZA cases that are for lot line reductions, new workshops that people are wanting to move forward with. And so, we're getting into the situation where we've had an abnormal, we've had a change fiscally in how we're advertising. And so, we're now dealing with the financial outcomes of that. And so, it's not necessarily having to do anything with solar specifically with the printing and advertising aspect of it.
And I'm certainly not looking at this as though this is solar's fault that we're in this position, but I think solar has created an opportunity for the council to weigh in. Or, I'm sorry, that the current situation, the lack of funding, has created an opportunity for the council to weigh in. Any additional questions from the council?
I wanted to hear what Steve had to say to recommend.
It's got to be really good too, we've been setting it up. Sorry, so this is money that we haven't expended yet though, this is for future spent expenses, basically.
So, the way the funding works for the Planning Commission and the BZA is the money comes into our office and it goes directly into the general fund itself. And we anticipate X amount of funding to be spent each year on printing and advertising, as an example. And regardless, the individuals pay in to those cases. So, if I have a case in September, and they pay $200, $250 for their case, even though they have given us the money, I do not have the line item dollars to expend those funds, because they're within the general fund itself. Not allocated to our budget. There's no reciprocating fund that comes back to the Planning Commission for all the funds that come in. It's only given to the council as a whole within the general fund pot.
So, Ty.
So, to answer Jesse's question.
Yeah, go ahead.
The council's not a rubber stamp over every plan or the BZA, right? They get a budget like every other department, and if they spend their budget, then they spend their budget, and that's why they're back here, right? They don't just get to spend more money for whatever reason, and we can talk about home-based businesses or ADA ramps, and that's all well and good. But the truth of the matter is, we know the Public Access Counselor gave an opinion that said that they were holding meetings illegally earlier this year. So, they want an outsized legal budget, we know that. I don't know what amount of their budget has been spent on solar. I don't know what amount of their budget was spent on home businesses or ADA compliance, right? So, it's all well and good to say we've expended more, why, I don't know, what projects they run, I don't know. But at the end of the day, it is up to the council to approve or deny the requests. And if you're not getting the transparency you want, you're within your grounds to ask and to figure out what projects do you want to move forward, projects you don't want to move forward, and to the extent you want to fund, are you planning the BZA? And if they're holding illegal meetings.
Yeah, so what I, if I hear you correctly, Marcel, you're suggesting that the council could approve specific additional appropriations based on the content of the agenda proposed, is that? Is that what you're suggesting?
I'm going to push back a little bit, Jesse, I think that, you know, I was thinking about this a lot over the last couple of weeks. Once a budget is approved for a department, they can spend it for any legal purpose of their department. So, you're not going to be able to pick and choose which advertisement BZA runs and which meeting they call the Plan Commission, because they have other legitimate business purposes. The one thought we were throwing around, and the auditor may have to work with us on this, is if you took all the dollars and put them in your budget, and then you would have to approve those individual advertisements and those individual legal expenses. You can't restrict the department from spending them, but you could, you could make your own mind up which projects you wanted to authorize and which you didn't.
So, if we decided to do that, what would be the mechanism that you would recommend? Obviously, we're not prepared to do that tonight.
I think it's a transfer, I think it's an appropriation transfer from the lines that you're cleaning out of BZA or the additional appropriation that you're currently talking about, instead of putting it into BZA as a department, putting it into the council as a department.
So, we currently have a line item in the council budget called Council Projects, which.
Is that a 300 or a 200? It's a 30, so would printing and advertising come out of the same kind of line, or would it need to be, okay, so you have the right kind of line.
We've got 200, we've got $200,000 on that line right now.
Yep.
So, I don't know.
Would the Auditor's Office take the position that special projects could be used to pay for printing, advertising, or legal expenses?
Those have always been separated out for transparency purposes, so we don't specific to.
They prefer they be transferred to a new line item.
Okay.
Am I saying that right?
So, we would need to set that up for either the July meeting or a specially called meeting if necessary?
A transfer does not require as much hoops as an additional appropriation, so you could do that.
But we obviously can't do it, we can't do it tonight.
That's right.
Right, okay. Thoughts from the council?
Ty, you know, I know you're here just to talk about an additional for advertiser purposes, but where are we at in the whole process of solar? And honestly, all of this to us, I shouldn't speak for us, but I know those who are strongly opposed to solar and who ran on opposing solar would like to do something. We'd like to keep our promises to the public, I believe the public is adamantly opposed to this in general. You're going to have most likely next year, most likely, a unanimous consent amongst the council and the Commissioners to stop solar. So, where are we at right now with the process? Can solar still move forward this year?
Can, what do you mean by move forward?
I mean, could they start to make, get permits, you got to get a special use, you got to have a decommissioning agreement, correct?
Correct.
They need a road usage agreement as well.
And so.
They can still apply.
It could conceivably still take root this year, could it not?
Correct, an application can still apply, they can still go through the hearing process, whether it's approved, denied, or anything along those lines, just like any other BZA case. It just has a lot more eyes on it. It's not under a moratorium.
And I would say, should the Commissioners, whatever action, if we decide to take some action tonight to to put some chains on this process, whatever action that I would suggest could be reversed immediately as soon as the Commissioners enact a moratorium.
You're saying the current Commissioners?
If the current Commissioners would put on a moratorium, if we were to take some sort of steps at our next meeting to limit the ability of the BZA to hear solar cases, we could remove any of those handcuffs immediately as soon as a moratorium's declared. I don't want to be a roadblock to progress, but I do want to be a roadblock to things that need to be blocked.
Why are we mulling that now, and what's the $5,000 for legal fees, is there something pertaining to that? Or is that anticipated expenses for, just in general, or?
We, every time we have our attorney show up to a meeting, that's costing us money, and we're anticipating bills for that coming in. We're virtually out of money in that line item already. Because historically, we've only been at about 50% of that budget every year, because I don't call them in to come to meetings. I limit the amount of conversations I have to keep that budget as tight as possible. But with the large interests of solar, with the large interest of battery, making sure that everything's being run properly, we've had several more conversations this year and the end of last year, which is when essentially fourth cut, our fourth quarter expenses come in, it comes in in January. So usually in the rears, just a matter of how far.
So that's another expense that could continue to grow too.
Councilwoman Johnson and I have done a deep dive in, into claims. And year to date, we have paid the county, our taxpayers have paid Jones, the attorney that represents the planning commission, $8,445.2. And then there's been invoices from Mr. Clevenger as well, who is our county attorney. But it's been for planning, zoning, solar farms, BSS, and the amount of $10,650. So our taxpayers have paid $10,650 for that above and beyond what we've paid the planning commission attorney. So far, year to date, we've spent $9,025 talking about solar for legal advertising. Oh, well, that's not even, that's not even advertising, that's legal, that's just legal. So.
Just for Mr. Clevenger.
That's just for Mr. Clevenger. So that's, that's a lot. Digging into those invoices has been revealing.
Yeah. Well, and I'm not so much worried about the money, I'm worried about the direction that we're moving in.
Correct. Correct. Also, I believe other counties have been adding the fees for advertising into their plan, into their fees when you, when you apply. Is that something that we do?
Yes.
We do.
Yeah, so when you, so if you were an applicant for a project on your own property, you've paid us the money to do all the advertising for that.
Have the fees gone up since our advertising fees have gone up significantly? Have we increased our fees?
It was right about the same time.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that fee increase.
Yeah. Yeah, so those, those fees go directly into the general fund and they don't, they don't replenish those pots that he pulls from, for those purposes automatically. It always comes back through us.
Okay.
Solar companies aren't paying for those expenses because they're not paying for advertising on their own ordinances or anything else, that's all on us.
Yeah.
Right.
I still would like to see fully funding the planning commission for advertising fees for, for everything needed on that part.
What are your thoughts on that, Steve? Is if we, if we fully fund the planning commission, are they able to move that into, into BZA?
I, I don't know the process here well enough, so I don't want to speak for the auditor's office. But it's possible that those dollars can become fungible. So an advertising bill could be posted, and it's, it's for a BZA applicant, but it pay, it's paid out of the planning commission. I know that happens other places, I'm not sure about here. It's also possible the commissioners could pay it, because they can pay bills for any department of the county, so. If somebody wants to pay the bill, I think it can get paid. Am I wrong? Would you guys hold up a bill because it was BZA instead of planning commission?
As long as there's funding in the line and we have an itemized invoice, then it passes my audit.
That's right.
To go through to the commissioners.
It becomes a bit fungible.
So do the commissioners have funds to pay for this themselves?
They, they for sure have legal money. They could pay some legal expenses.
But we could, we could possibly shut down the, the advertising process by requiring those to be paid from our council fund, correct?
Could definitely make it more difficult for Ty to go get money. I'm not saying it's impossible. He might be able to find another line in a commissioner fund to pay that.
Okay.
I'm not picking on you, but.
I would be careful with getting into that with Indiana code in terms of requirements for advertising within a given timeframe.
That's right. Somebody, because somebody files and you have to do the advertisement within a certain period of time.
Correct.
So we've taken somebody's money to do advertising.
And you don't do it.
And now we're holding on to it.
Can't do that.
We probably should refund it to them if they're the, if they're the solar company and they want to pay for a permit and you know it's not gonna be hurt, you might as well just refund their money to them, right?
Or, or we just don't do any advertising for anything that's not an application from a petitioner. So, you know, change just to the zoning ordinance, et cetera, I mean, whatever they're looking at, that, that's outside of, you know, someone specifically asking for an application to go through to build a shed or to, you know.
For a property owner.
Yeah, right. So, so no approve, you know, no advertising for anything other than what's actually being applied for by someone who's coming in saying, hey, county, I'd like to do this business, or hey, county, I'd like to do this.
Because essentially, that's not the landowners that would be stopping, that's the special projects that.
I mean, the special projects that the BZA area plan are putting forward, correct?
Solar or battery.
So you would suggest not having any ordinance amendments?
If you're not following the will of the council and they are.
I'm just trying to make sure I understand where you're going.
Looking for ways to stop meetings that, you know, the public access counselor says are illegal or other kinds of things, then yes.
I've, I've got a question. I'm, I'm really confused, sorry. Where, where are we, Ty? Where are we on this solar thing? Okay, there seems to be issues, you know? We all have our own preferences on what we think is good and what we think is bad, okay? Right now, are we saying that what has happened with the planning commission and the BZA, that if the commissioners put a moratorium on it right now, that that would stop what's already in work? In works, or has something already got to the point to where there is no stopping? That's, that's what I'd like to know. I mean, I, I don't know that answer. Does anybody here know that answer?
As far as I know, Jim, until someone pulls a permit, we still have the chance to stop this.
Has that happened?
Has there been any permits?
We've had one application come in, but we're still under vetting with it.
Okay. That's my confusion. Because if I applied for something and it's not solar, and I paid for the permit, and I paid for the advertising for what I'm doing for a varying special use or whatever, if I pay that, I don't think you could just collect that and hold my money in an escrow and not disperse that money. So I don't want a problem being created for the auditor either. Now, am I missing something?
Yeah, because we will, any monies that come in for the department for planning commission or BZA gets deposited into the general fund, it goes into the general bucket. So if somebody is applying, they're paying those fees for advertising upfront, we're then holding that money. When planning commission puts their budget together, they're anticipating how much it's going to cost for legal fees, but if they have more cases than usual, then that money is not being re-appropriated back to the planning commission, it just sits in the cash balance of the general fund, hence the additional appropriation.
Right. So I know we have a big mess on our hands, and it's, it's, it's no secret, the adjoining counties all have it. A friend of mine lives in St. Joe County, and she's got a beautiful horse farm, and she's gonna be surrounded with solar all the way around her.
Yeah.
Both sides back and across the street. And she goes, Jim, what do I need to do? She said, I've got a half a million dollar property here, and I've done some checking, she said, with some friends that know property values. And Jim, if I don't do something, it looks to me like I'm gonna lose 50% of my value. Now, I don't know whether there's a true basis for that or not, because I have not been there. But I know that there is a panic going on. I know that, because I deal with those people every day. But I guess, for clarification for me, are we to the point right now to where the boards have done things and they've moved it from step one to two or three, and we can't go back? Is there a moratorium that can be put on that just stops it? I think a lot of people would like to know that.
Unfortunately, only the commissioners can do that.
Exact, okay.
Yeah.
Can the planning commission do that?
Where, where are you with the?
Planning commission.
Where are you with the, the publication and the amendment process for the code?
For which portion? For solar, for battery?
Yes, for all of it.
Solar's enacted and battery is still under the review of the planning commission.
So it still needs to be published, it still needs to be put in a meeting, it still needs to be voted on.
It's in process, if you will. It still has to go to the commissioners to make whatever determination that they're gonna come up with.
So has it been published?
Has, have we published it for public hearing, those sorts of things? Yes, multiple times.
So it's, it's already through the planning commission?
No. It's at planning commission.
So it needs to be put.
They have not made a final vote on what to do.
So it's just, it's at the final phase, there's just, the next meeting they vote on.
It's been up to the planning commission since February on what to do.
Yeah, they're, they're still hammering it out, Marcel. I mean, they're, they're really.
Well, and this is why, so to try to get clarity for you.
Do you understand why I'm confused?
I understand why you're confused, because we're not, we're not getting a straight answer. And I don't know if there's something that's been put forward, that's been fully published that the planning commission wants to vote on or not.
It has.
The question is, if, if what is put forward has not been published, is not before them to vote, and is not in the final thing, then if you take away the publication budget and nothing's getting published, other than the people who are putting forward their actual petitions, then you've accomplished the goal that you're, you're, you're going for, right? They still need to publish things if they want to change the code. And I don't know, in these answers, I, I can't tell you, I don't know.
Okay.
Solar's been adopted?
Yes.
They could walk in right now, file with you?
Yes.
Get approved?
One has.
The, the only, the only thing that's, that's stopping final approval is they still have to, the commissioners need to adopt a decommissioning agreement and a, and a road usage agreement, which they're currently working on.
But each solar that comes in has to get a special exception?
When it's in the A1 district, yes.
And that would require advertising?
Correct.
In a public hearing?
Correct.
But they have to pay the fees like anybody else.
Correct.
I mean, that's not.
They're prepaying for their advertising.
Yeah, we're past. So battery seems to be the thing that's.
Data centers is coming next.
That would be a question for Mr. Addison.
At some point, we'll address it. We already have something on the books for data centers, but it had a lot to do with Bitcoin mining.
It's not as good as it was?
It was one of the hottest things in 2020.
Yeah.
And that's what we were addressing at that point in time. Nobody at that point in time was looking at data centers.
Yeah.
Especially within our given region.
So if, if the will of the council is to do everything it can to block solar without, block solar and batteries without interfering with the normal operation of business for average folks, is there a recommendation on what we can do?
Yeah, I, I would go back to my first comment, which would be for the council to set up separate line items for advertising and legal, and then individually approve those expenses on your own approvals.
And then it would be pretty politically clear at this point that if anyone else in county government decided to find a way to fund that, they would be actively opposing the will of the people.
I think so.
I think it's a pretty dramatic move to do what it is that we've got to do tonight, or not tonight, but is when we can do it. So we would probably need a motion to set up, to, to create ordinances to set up new line items in the council budget?
I think that's how you normally do it. A motion to introduce an ordinance for transfer one month from now, to take out of your special projects fund and put into two new line items, one called advertising, one called legal expenses.
Could we, could we possibly freeze the commissioners' budget from spending money to cover anything for solar or?
What are you, what are your thoughts on that?
I don't know.
So you can reduce a budget, but anytime you reduce, let's call it legal, you're also keeping the commissioners from spending legal on something else.
Right.
So there's ripple effects.
And I guess we wouldn't need to cross that bridge unless they started trying to intervene in this, right?
Seems like you're making a pretty good statement.
Yeah. Any questions from the council, or is there, what, what is the will of the council on this?
My question still is, with the printing and advertising, the 1350 and the 1500, has that, has that already been committed?
All of it? No, this is a hopes to get us to the end of the year.
Okay.
With what we anticipate for future cases for the citizens of Marshall County.
And it's the same thing with the legal, correct? The addition.
I hope to not touch a dollar of it. But if I've spent roughly that same amount in four months, I can almost bet we're gonna have more legal bills coming. Because that also goes towards violations, cleaning up property, representing us in court over there for those different projects.
Right.
So I just, what do you want from me?
I mean, we want to figure out some way to stop this, Ty. We want to, we.
I understand where you sit on solar, it's been clear for months.
And I think the voters made it very clear last month where they sit on it, too.
I'm just trying to look at the rest of our cases.
Right.
You, you're looking at one case.
I'm looking at the transformation of our county.
In 70 cases. I'm trying to figure out what the other 69 are gonna do.
So I think what Mr. Masterson is asking, is there any outstanding bills that you have not paid?
Not, not to my knowledge.
Okay. You covered everything that you got to cover.
I've got a $175 bill coming for July.
How much for July?
175.
Okay.
And we can always reduce.
And that's just an estimate, that's it.
We can always reduce these, these estimates and move them forward with what he needs absolutely right now, so that we can have some time to, to put together a, a plan for going forward. And I don't think our, again, I don't think our desire is to deny you the ability to, to serve the average person with their average project. I think we would just be in a position where going forward, you would have to come and ask us month by month for specifics. And like I said, that'll go away as soon as the commissioners put a moratorium on.
So you want me to personally show up every month?
Yes.
To pay our bills?
Yes. And I hate to do that, but there's, you know, there's a heck of a lot of people out there that are really upset, and we've got to, I, I have to do what I can do. So.
Okay.
Let me just say that as an elected official, you know, our first and foremost job is to represent the will of the people. We believe the will of the people do not want solar, and they're looking to us to help out. And again, I might be presumptuous, but I believe you'll have a council and a board of commissioners next year who's unanimous in opposition. We still have elections going forward. But you also look at where the voters put their faith in. And the candidates who oppose solar were overwhelmingly chosen. So as elected officials, it's our job to represent the will of the people. And I would like, you know, going forward, perhaps there to be a conversation within the planning commission, perhaps within your office, to move in a different direction. We don't want to stifle development at all. Solar's not one that we are looking forward to having in Marshall County. If you go around to Stark County, you're seeing some prime farmland just littered with solar panels. And the people have spoken, I think you got an opportunity in the fall, but at, at the same time, you have other counties who have turned down solar. LaPorte County Plant Commission voted 7-2 to put a moratorium on it. Fulton County Board of Commissioners voted to put either moratorium or, or deny it for the future. Cosiasko County has ordinances that are restricted to industrial solar. So it's our job as elected officials to do the will of the people, and I believe the will of the people is not to have solar in Marshall County, and that's where I stand. And so, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion to deny the request of the additional appropriations this time, and perhaps we'll come back at a later date. But that's my motion, to deny the additional appropriation requests for the BZA and for the planning commission.
I would second that motion.
All right, I've got a motion by Mr. Harmon and a second by Mr. Patterson to deny the additionals. Is there debate?
I would just like to piggyback off what Mr. Harmon said here, with the different legal issues and conflicts of interest from elected officials and everything else, this is a problem. And I think we need to do what we can.
I also have information on, on the solar, or I mean, on the soil testing results that are very, there's issues going on there as well. It, it's, there's issues all the way around that I think need to be resolved before we move any further.
Mr. Faustich.
I've got a question for you, Deb.
Yes.
The committee that was formed for the battery.
The committee that was formed for the battery, by not funding any of this, is that going to hinder your guys' work on that?
The, that was never, that was never put together?
Oh, that was, I thought it was.
It was not. Do we have a, with the firefighter that we were talking about, Mr. Abbott, do we have that set up before the next planning commission meeting?
It'll be at 6:00.
Okay. So there will be a work session with all, with this new information with, for a, from a fire chief in Arizona?
He retired a couple of years ago, but yeah, previous fire chief from Sunrise. You're surprised.
And again, I would say a vote in favor of Mr. Harmon's motion would not be a vote to shut down everything going on in the planning department. It would just be giving us the opportunity to trickle that money item by item and to make sure that solar's not going to slip by while we're, while we've got our shot on this, so.
Do we need to add to the motion or make a second?
We'll make a second motion after this motion's resolved.
Yeah. And to set up ordinances.
Any further discussion? All right, so we've got a motion.
Sorry.
Hold up.
Do we need to make a motion to pull that out of the consent agenda?
Well, we can vote on it a second time when we get down to appropriations, but my motion is to right now, and I'll just make it more specific, to deny the amounts as advertised to us. BZA, $1,350. Plant Commission, printing and advertisement, $1,500. Plant Commission, $6,000. The BZA was for printing and advertisement as well. My motion is to deny those three line items.
Can I still second that motion?
Any further debate? All right, hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, same sign, and the motion's agreed to. Before we move on, we've got probably an additional motion that we'd like to consider. Mr. Dalton's suggestion, so that we don't stall this thing forever.
Can Mr. Dalton say his motion?
Steve, you can't make a motion, but you're going to have to.
My recommendation, which you could take as a motion, my recommendation would be that you consider an ordinance at your next meeting to transfer money from your own special projects line to two new lines, one for advertising and one for legal.
Yeah, in the amount of $3,000 on each line, how about we just go ahead and make it easy to work with?
Sounds like a motion.
I so moved.
I've got a motion by Mrs. Cox. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Faustich? Is there discussion? And hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, same sign, and the motion's agreed to. So Ty, we're going to be considering the establishment of those funds and the transfers at the July meeting. And at any point after that, if we have anything urgent needs to be done, I will seriously consider calling a special meeting to make sure that we get you taken care of.
How should we send bills for council?
I think it might be more appropriate to say, how would you get approval to incur expenses? Because if you incurred the expense, then the county would be legally liable to pay it.
Well said, yes.
So we might need some type of process, Mr. President, where the plant commission BZA needs approval for an expense before they incur it.
Would you guys be willing to empower me to look at that?
So basically, they're going to have to write up what they want to spend, send it to us for approval. There's a lot of places that do work like that.
And I will communicate that to you all when I see it, and I, yeah, and I'll be able to sign off on that, right? All right. We'll need a motion for that as well.
So moved.
Second. I got a motion by Mr. Patterson, a second by Mr. Faustich to empower the president to give authorization to the planning department to spend on printing and advertising and legal services for the remainder of the calendar year or until a moratorium is declared by the commissioners. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, same sign, and the motion's agreed to.
What's going to be the best form of communication for you?
Just, you got my cell phone number, right?
Right, because you'll, I'm just trying to make sure I'm doing it the way you're wanting, because this is.
Give me a call.
Never seen anything like this.
Give me a call, give me a text, and I'll come in and see you.
Okay. Sounds good.
Yeah. And I am very sorry that you are in this position. This is not fun.
It's, so when we call, it's going to probably need to be pretty close to timely to be able to meet deadlines, those sorts of things for advertising with the pilot, WTA, those sorts of things.
If we've got to get a quorum together for a special meeting to approve something, I'm happy to do that. And again, this goes away as soon as we have a moratorium. So, okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the, you've got council items. We've got ordinance 2024-4 parenthetical 4 to establish a new fund numbered 8117 EECBG electric vehicles. And this is to allow us to receive grant funds regarding the purchase of electric vehicles, correct?
Any fund that it's in the 8,000 series is a federal fund, a federal grant. Any fund in the 9,000 series is a state grant.
All right.
Motion to approve the creation of Fund 8117 as presented.
Second. I've got a motion by Mr. Harmon and a second by Mr. Faustich to approve creation of the fund. Are there any questions? All right, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, same sign, and the motion is agreed to. We have ordinance 2024-4 parenthetical 5 establishing new fund 8116 COVID-19 Bridge Program. And for the public's reference, this is not about roads and bridges. It's about allowing people to bridge the gap. Folks that vaccines are not covered for them by their insurance or for other reasons, but folks who wish to get the vaccine. So is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
I've got a motion by Mr. Masterson, a second by Mrs. Cox. Is there any debate? And hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, same sign, and the motion is agreed to. We've got ordinance 2024-10 parenthetical 4, an amendment to the salary ordinance 2023-25. And this is something that we've seen before, just some adjustments to the pay for the probation officers based on bringing us into compliance with changes to the Indiana Code. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion by Mr. Patterson, a second by Mr. Masterson. Is there debate? And hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, same sign, and the motion is agreed to. Before we move on to minutes, I've got approval of Sender Dalton and Libin Law invoices to allow me to submit those for payment. We've got two Sender Dalton invoices, one in the amount of $305, the other in the amount of $1,563, and a Libin Law invoice in the amount of $2,100. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
I've got a motion by Mrs. Cox and a second by Mrs. Johnson to approve payment of those invoices. Is there debate?
Just like to say, I appreciate you gentlemen greatly.
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, same sign, and the motion is agreed to.
You snooze, you're moved.
Snooze.
And we've got our minutes from the May 9, 2024 meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Wait, are you second?
I've got a motion by Mr. Harmon, a second by Mr. Faustich to approve the minutes as presented. Is there debate? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, same sign, and the motion is agreed to. I missed that, madam. You already had the claims down there. I just didn't see it that way. We've got a appointment to the Argus Public Library. The good folks at Argus Library have suggested Amber Horstman to be their appointment to replace Ronald Renssberger mid-term. This would be a term extending through June 30, 2028. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
I've got a motion by Mr. Masterson, a second by Mrs. Cox to appoint Amber Horstman to the Argus Public Library. Is there debate? And hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, same sign, and the appointment is confirmed. All right.
We still have to do the additionals and the transfers?
Oh, I think Adam was catching over here.
I'm sorry. I got a little carried away here. The consent agenda, as has been our practice, the council has chosen to publish additional appropriations, reduction of appropriations, and transfers of appropriations ahead of time. Also to make copies of those available at the back of the room for your review. And then any non-controversial items are approved en masse. As you saw earlier, we debate the ones that are controversial. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Is that with those that we pulled out?
That would be, well, it depends on what your motion is.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of.
The items which we denied earlier?
Yes, the three, and I don't have the fund numbers on me, but yes, the three that we already pulled out. The BZA, 1350, Planning Committee, I'll refresh my notes. Somebody help me out here.
Plant Commission, 1500.
There you go.
Plant Commission, level 6,000.
6,000, there you go.
Is your motion to approve the transfers in addition?
Yes.
Okay, so did you hear that?
So I've got a motion by Mr. Patterson to approve the consent agenda in its totality, minus the three additionals that were previously denied to the planning department. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Faustich. Is there debate?
I just wanted to bring to light, I talked to Tori because I was like, okay, can you explain reductions? So those in the audience that don't understand the reductions, there is State Board of Accounts, Tori, I don't know if you want to explain it, but State Board of Accounts has been going through and changing basically where money is placed in our community corrections. And so that's why there's reductions and additionals. That's why our additionals are so big this time.
Thank you.
Cleaning up the books. Is there further discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, same sign, and the consent agenda is adopted. All right, at this time, before we entertain any additional comments from the council, we'll take public input on any item whatsoever. So at this point, any members of the public which to address us on any topic are definitely welcome. Please feel free to come forward.
I am Marlene Muller, Union Township trustee from Culver, and I was here not last month, but the month before, and spoke. And also I talked to you privately before the election about if there was anything the council could do to help with EMS services in the county. And you were going to check into it and see if you found anything that you could do to help, and I wondered where you stood on, has anything been done? Have you checked into anything or?
We are getting back onto that topic. Obviously, the last month heading up to the election was extremely busy for everybody, but that's definitely on my list. Mr. Klotz and I have had conversations about that. And it's definitely something that we need to get moving forward on, yes. I thank you for bringing that back to public attention.
So two months and we haven't done anything yet, what you're saying?
Well, in a moment, you beat us to the punch, but I was going to remind Mr. Bohannon about the commitment to form a group to look at this stuff and.
That's what you could want to do.
Yeah. Okay. I definitely want to get moving on it myself.
I just wanted to know.
As you can see, we've had a lot of other very serious topics going on this month.
You've got a lot of serious topics, but only one is being, being addressed.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Any other members of the public that would wish to address the council? Please feel free to come forward.
I just came to introduce myself. For those of you who have not met me yet, or I have not met yet, my name is Jane Deaton. I am currently, as of last week, serving as the Purdue Extension Agent for 4H and Youth Development. I have been in the office a full nine days at this point in time. I'm incredibly enthusiastic. I'm so grateful to be home. Many of you know, Marshall County is home for me. I've lived in Arizona for the last 10 years, almost 10 years. So it is, I'm incredibly grateful to be home, to be using my education background to reach the youth of Marshall County through 4H. My family involvement in 4H goes back to the 40s and 50s, so I often refer to the fact that the blood in my veins runs green. So I just wanted to stop and introduce myself, and I know there have been some difficulties recently. And I just want to say that I am very much looking forward to getting to know all of you. Some of you I do know, many of you I don't. And I am so grateful for your support, and I'm here, willing to work with, discuss, answer questions, and I'll probably ask a lot of questions as well. But again, I just wanted to stop by and introduce myself and thank you, and say that I'm very excited to work with each and every one of you.
We're excited to have you.
Thank you.
If I could comment, please. I know Jane a little bit. This is a home run hire. I mean, I think there's going to be good things happening. I'm glad you're back. She's a bourbon gal. I'm an adopted bourbon guy.
Absolutely.
Home run hire, and I couldn't be happier, so.
I just want to say, too, that I'm very glad to see your face now in a Zoom meeting, and I'm very happy that you're here, because I know you guys are very happy in getting what you guys need in 4H and extension. So I think this is overall positive. So thank you very much for coming in.
We have some great things in the programming already, just in the last couple of weeks. And as I'm sure you know, change is often slow, and it's hard to get the wheels turning. But I'm up to my neck in trainings and learning all of the bits and pieces of the job, and we have a couple of new programs in the works already, so hopefully exciting things yet to come.
You'll be with her.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to address the council? Please feel free to come forward.
My name's Skylar Ellinger. I work in the area and soon going to be living over in the Bourbon area. And really concerned about the states of the roads in this county. They are atrocious. I have had the misfortune of hitting a pothole, and because the policy is if nobody reports the pothole, that damage from that pothole isn't covered. I have a vehicle now that I can't drive because it has a bent rim. And when is it that we pay, guys, fund a highway department that's supposed to be out monitoring the roads for anything? And why is it the public's forced to do the job of the highway department to let them know, hey, you have a pothole here, you should go fix it? When somebody is supposed to be in that area driving the roads in a dump truck, fixing potholes as needed. There's, it's on Lincoln Highway that they happened to finally patch it. It's been that way for years. It's like an eight-inch drop-off. No berm, nothing. Like, I drive farm machines. No berm, nothing. Like I drive farm machinery down it. When I have to meet a car, I'm off the side and I'm so glad I have air ride suspension on it going over back on the road. Like I said, I'm out of vehicle now. Make it, still have to make payments on the vehicle. I have to go buy a rim now because the highway department can't do their job. What's your guys' solution to that? I know you guys have meetings with them, trying to get things corrected. Like my dad worked for the highway department and the road that we live on wonderfully maintained. He was a mechanic for years. He retired from there. After his retirement, piss poor road after that. It's in shambles now. Like it's embarrassing seeing these roads.
Well, I certainly share your frustration. Obviously, the management of the highway department is done by the Board of Commissioners.
Yes, I understand that. You guys appropriate the money for the highway department.
And I can tell you that record amounts of money over the past two years have been appropriated to assist the highway department in their efforts. So I do know that their work has been multiplied.
By grinding up roads? Everything I've seen has been roads ground up.
And that is part of the process. It doesn't happen overnight. You have to grind the road up before you can repave it, so.
That's lack of maintenance on it. If your people are out driving it, doing what they're supposed to be doing, patching roads, then all you gotta do is cobble and chip and seal it. If you let it get to the state that they're in, then yeah, it's gonna be ground up and it's gonna look horrible.
I would just like to say, I'm sorry about your car. And I know we've all shared those frustrations as well, which is why we've tried to make it a priority to get things fixed. But it's been a problem quite a while and there is a lot of neglect on roads. It's a course correct and that we've tried to help fund it. The council's the funding mechanism, but the commissioners are the driving force. And I'm sorry to hear, there's a lot of people that share your frustration. We have as well.
The only good road in Marshall County is between, is full road between Bremen and 30. That's the best road in the county.
Can I ask which road you said you were on?
For what, that you'd be living on?
Yeah.
The one that you hit was Lincoln Highway.
Lincoln Highway.
It was a Birmingham. It was a Birmingham issue, correct?
Yeah, yeah. Like a picture of the historical society, that's what the roads look like. See, it's like, man, that's, you travel the backroads of the county, that's what they're like. They are horrible.
Yeah, I...
Seen dirt roads maintained better.
I absolutely am on board with the idea of road improvement without a doubt. The power of the county council, as you saw, is to actually deny. And we can't deny funding to roads because then nothing gets fixed. So going forward, you are going to have some new blood in the management team, so.
I've known that guy for, he was head of the department. I've known him for a while. I used to work there a little bit too. I was hoping it would be better, but I don't, it's just status quo of poor management.
I don't want to debate at all. This is not a debate.
You're good.
There's still about 30% of the roads that are failing. The improvement was, believe it or not, we were at almost 85% five, six years ago.
Failing.
And failing, poor to failing. And so the improvement has been made, but when there's still 200, 300 miles of road that are failing, that's still a lot of road. So we're probably the most aggressive council that you're going to find to try at least get the money to the roads? I understand it was a management side. Trust me, it was a management side. And we put in our two cents, but, you know.
I think hopefully at the point, we can get a lot higher than 30% failing and then go into maintenance mode, which will also reduce our expenses as well.
Years ago, you speak great roads. You speak great roads.
Yeah, well, like I said, I certainly have not forgotten about that. That still continues to be our top priority for funding around here. And I expect that that will be the case when we do the budget again, that we're going to give them again more money than they asked for, so.
Hopefully you can stick to it. These roads need to be at least bermed. Shouldn't have an eight-inch drop on a main road. But like, this happened to be the first meeting since my vehicle got damaged from a road. And I'm just annoyed and mad. So that's why I wanted to come here.
And it's easy because we're here at night, right? The commissioners will be meeting on Monday morning, so.
Behind the cloak and people can't attend those meetings.
Yeah.
Well, I might say something for everybody else, but you're always more than welcome to come share your frustrations and let us know too. You're more than welcome here.
I appreciate it. Hopefully you guys can go to the commissioners and help her. I don't know.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, sorry.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to address the council? And please be sure to state your name and address for the record, please.
Brian Casper, 13805 Jar Road. And on behalf of myself and I think a lot of Marshall County, I want to applaud you, ladies and gentlemen, for sticking up for the people of Marshall County and making, trying to make a difference, trying to do what we want to do. And like I say, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
And anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. President. Julie Spitznagle, 5119 Sage Road, Plymouth. I'm going to kind of abandon my main, what I had written out today, just so I could comment on two other things, or maybe one. In regards to the solar, I applaud your efforts of what you're trying to do for listening to the people to stop the development in the county. I think it's important to understand from an economic development standpoint, the St. Joe County Redevelopment Director made the comment that there are residential areas surrounding solar projects. And I call BS on that one. It's solar projects swallowing up residential areas in that county. And they're coming for this county to do the same. And your plan director has ties to that same group of people that's trying to accomplish that. So thank you for closely monitoring what that's being done. I also want you to be aware, if you're interested in stopping those things, look for where they're going to spend the money that was just released for broadband and infrastructure development. Those solar, the batteries, the solar panels, and the data centers all need broadband. And if you look on their map of where they're going to put that money, it's in Marshall County. So there's only one reason that they want to expand that infrastructure in this county, and it's for those businesses. And these two gentlemen may be able to say I'm all wet because they're most closely related to it and have more knowledge than I do. But just from what I'm watching, they're coming for us. So thank you for your efforts. The main reason I wanted to speak to you tonight was, as a council, you have championed yourself to be willing to listen to the people of the county, act in their best interest of those county citizens, and to reduce spending, prevent misuse of spending, and spend wisely, which by the way, I do express my deepest gratitude for because that's something I don't think that was always a consciousness of to do in the past. So I do thank you for that. But I want to bring to your attention that you have, there is a department head in this county that is doing business with his family and their company. And they are profiting because of this conflict of interest, all directly is coming to him or his family members. And I can give you the information that shows that this company's name is in the members of his direct family and that their billing address for this company is this department head's home address. And I don't think that's fair. I don't think it's right. And I think there needs to be an investigation and a full audit to determine if those contracts that were given this company and the resources and the uses of those and the money that you have paid out of approval was appropriate for actually the work ever being done, or if there was county resources used, materials, anything else being done. So I'd like for you to do a full investigation and an audit into those things. And because I know these gentlemen are on an expensive clock, I'm going to cut. I'm going to cut short. Well, I got to support them in what they're trying to do, right? So I will cut short, but I would hope, and if any of you want to see the information that I have that supports these allegations and so forth, I would be happy to meet with you individually. But I would like you to, and I don't want to, I don't want to name them publicly right now out of an act of fairness and consideration. But I won't hesitate to in the future, if you as a council, do not do an investigation and the audit into what I'm telling you. Thanks.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Anybody else? All right, hearing nothing else from the public, any comments from the council?
I do want to acknowledge... No, go ahead. You want to say something?
I just say, I think we need to follow up with her from our end before tonight's over with.
Julie?
Yeah.
Yeah, I do want to make good on our promise two months ago to establish the committee that's going to look at the public safety tax. And I expressed interest in being a part of that. Mr. Grohl wanted to be a part of it. How we form it.
And that was, that was part of the reason why I wanted to have Mr. Dalton here, because I didn't want to just be talking to him personally. I do hope to engage his expertise in the creation of a, of some sort of a committee to study the issue of funding for first responders, for EMS and fire in particular. And, yeah, so I have made challenges to some of our other local officials about trying to get their redevelopment commissions to start thinking about that they would have a role to play in this as well. So it has not been forgotten. Just want to make sure we got back together and had a chance to regroup about that. Can we?
Who's calling that meeting? Tim, are you calling that meeting?
Well, I mean, if people are going to be on the committee, we need to form those who would like to be on the committee. We need to form a committee, you know, a subcommittee of some sort.
Yeah, and I would think that's not just necessarily members of county government, but to bring in some stakeholders from around the county. The only thing that I can think of that's been done like this previously is central dispatch. And so I would probably lean heavily on your expertise on how to form that and get that moving forward. So let's get together after the meeting and set up a time.
Can we kind of just discuss it a little bit? So this is just me speaking. I mean, this is more or less a temporary type of committee, right?
Right, yeah.
And so, I mean, I would like, me personally, I'd like to see some members of the general public because I think you get people who are maybe a little bit institutional. There could be one mindset. So I'd like to get a broad variety of people, you know? I think it's good to have, you know, dissent, you know? It's okay for people to disagree and it's okay for people to agree. And so you need some pros and you need some cons in the argument. So I would suggest, I don't know, maybe seven-ish people to just sit around and have a conference on this, or what do you think? Seven too many? I mean, too many chiefs, not enough Indians? I'm just throwing out some ideas for consideration.
Well, I think the key to this is to recognize that county government does not have a statutory responsibility for EMS and fire. It's not, it's our responsibility to come up with a solution because we're the only people who are in the position to do it. But we need to be engaged with these fire chiefs and these folks that are running the EMS services so that we can actually get a hold of what the actual needs are.
Yeah.
Because I, you know, again, it doesn't make a lot of sense just to throw a chunk of money at something unless you can prioritize where that's going.
Well, like I said, I mean, we would just look at the pros and the cons. I mean, for example, I mean, if you raise a public safety tax, are the fire territories then adversely affected? Will they have to lower their, you know, levees and other, I don't know. I mean, these are all questions we need to ask. I don't think you just...
Those individuals who have fires, territories will be taxed higher than everyone else.
I think just as a council, we took the position, right? We should at least study it rather than just go ahead and raise a tax. At least study it, right? That's the right thing to do.
My opinion is, without looking at it, I'm not in favor of a tax. I think the amount that they're asking for is fairly reasonable. And I know that I've talked to some firefighters that are not local and they've had a lot of additional expenses with OSHA training and everything else. My thoughts are, is we could somehow put that money together without doing a tax and having those different problems that happen with fire territories and everything else. And maybe you have a separate group that we kind of hand it off to where they know what they need. If it's something down in Tippi Canoe or something in Argus and they can formulate and we're just kind of helping them get the funding, maybe with the help of the other municipalities, like Jesse said.
I also think you need to bring somebody in that knows the funding at those municipalities, whether it's somebody from Bourbon, Argus, or Culver, whether it would be the clerk treasurer, or whether it would be a trustee. Marlene would be great on there.
Yeah.
Okay. So recommendations for committee formation? I mean, we can't really do it right now, but we're all, maybe we should...
I think that it looks like what's been appointed so far is you, me, and Stan have been appointed to this committee. That might make sense just for the three of us to get together and see what it looks like to expand that group and to bring in some other stakeholders.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say you need a wide variety of stakeholders between fire and EMS or, you know, large fire departments versus small, or north and south, east and west.
So do you send that invite out to the town managers then, to ask them for input, for people? Do you put it out publicly looking for people? How do you go about it?
I mean, we're going to do an analysis on the whole concept of public safety tax, the pros, the cons, who wins, who loses perhaps, you know? I mean, this could be a research paper, you know, for a doctoral thesis, right?
Well, I mean, that's the thing, you know, we're in the position where we have to kind of oversee this process. But again, we're not the experts on this. And I'm certainly not the guy that you want doing an analysis on this. So, you know, obviously we're going to have to...
I don't want to talk it to death either. I mean, I don't want to spend six months or a year on something like this, you know? Just looking for some guidance on how to form this committee that was, you know, proposed two months ago.
Yeah, I think we should get together with Mr. Dalton and see if there's been any, anybody else who's done something like this similar so that we can learn from their successes and mistakes. I don't want to reinvent the wheel there if we don't have to, so.
I would just, my suggestion, I would look at the tax and then no tax, and then maybe how you could fund it without a tax. Would I, my two cents on it?
I think definitely, you know, our preference would be, you know, even if we have to look at dedicating some county resources to it, if we can do it without raising taxes, that's the way to go.
I think this is a great way to pull everybody to the table too, to figure out needs, wants, what everybody else could help with, if they can make adjustments, and what we could help overall as well if we didn't do a tax.
Jesse, can we move on to one other thing here?
Sure.
Yeah. Sorry.
The three of us are on the personnel.
Yeah, you know, the center, the table.
Yeah, we're the personnel. We had several different departments put in and want some job descriptions relooked at by WIS. So they were sent off to WIS. WIS has given us several memos back. And our personnel subcommittee is going to be meeting on the 21st, Friday, to review those and put together a recommendation that will be then brought back to the council.
Okay.
That's quite a stack.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else from the council? No, no, you're... No, no, you're good.
Fine.
All right, is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
A second.
I've got a second by Mr. Masterson, excuse me, a motion by Mr. Masterson, a second by Mrs. Cox for adjournment. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned.
Thank you.